Ready.
Ready on the right. Ready in the back. Right. Good, ready. Good evening everybody, I'd like to call to order regular meeting of Board of Education. We'll be held on Monday at quarter seven twenty twenty four at six thirty PM in the District Administration Building. After the pleasure of allegiance, I'd like everyone to just take a brief moment of silence. And keeping your thoughts all the families and students that were affected by that our accident. Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of United States of America and the free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great day of justice. Alright, thank you very much everyone. Just a quick note. For those who are following along, points number four and five on the agenda, so we're going flip flop tonight. We're just gonna bump our presentation up. Prior to our executive session. But first and foremost, to get into everything, I'd like to welcome and introduce our new student Board of Education member, Francesca Zakara.
Hi everyone, my name is Francesca Zakara, I'm a junior. Thank you for the opportunity here, excited to give this out.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Francesca. Do you have any other? Oh, actually, we're gonna save that till later. No bad to report because Francesca came super prepared. Alright, she actually came with a handout, ready to go, so great job. So that'll be in a little bit. Alright, moving on to our next point, we've been moving forward. Presentation from Newton Housler, PC Financial Audit.
Hello, good evening everyone. I'm here tonight to present the June thirty twenty twenty four. I'm getting a few questions. I met earlier this evening with the committee and discussed the results of the audit in detail. Tonight I'll just give you a quick overview. Included in the financial statement packet that you have in front of you is the audit of the district's financial statements. The audit of the federal awards under the uniform guidance and the audit of the intercostal activity funds. With regard to the audit of the financial statements, we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. You will know the district is in good financial condition and is well reserved. There were no new GOSI pronouncements that were implemented this year that affected the financial statement presentation. To note, going forward in twenty four twenty five, there is one new GOSI, GOSI one oh one. That will affect the way the district calculates compensate expenses. So that will be a slight change coming for twenty four twenty five. In regard to the federal awards under the uniform guidance. This year we did audit as the major programs, the child nutrition cluster, Tito One grant. As well as the FEMA grant that the district received this year. We're considered a low risk auditee. What that means is we are required to audit twenty percent as opposed to forty percent if you're a high risk auditee. Of the total federal expenditures for the year. This year with the grants that we audited as major programs, we were at twenty three percent. Over ratio, we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on that. Right, in order to the federal award. And last but not least is the audit of the intercostal activity funds. And we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on that. Audit as well. The district has addressed all comments and recommendations. Sponsors are included, results that are included with that packet that you have. I just want to say, as always, the business office was a tremendous job monitoring your budget and maintaining the books and records. You know, with the transition of new treasurer this year, they did an amazing job, given the circumstance with the cyber issue and trying to do that. And we're still here this early, so they did a, they did a great job. The book's closed and they're ready for the audit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and please just remind me your name again.
Jennifer Capocchi.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. I would have said so in the beginning, if I remember. I appreciate it, yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to our next order of business, I need a motion for executive session. John Mashle. Be resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent to reconvene the business force. Discussions related to, if let me get through a particular person. Those in favor? Alright, thank you everyone, I'll be next over.
Alright, thank you for your questions everyone. Moving on to our next order of business, before the floor. Persons wishing to speak firstly recognized by the president and identify themselves. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify as a spokesperson. Comments shall be brief and concise, generally not exceeding four minutes in length per speaker, which may be extended at discretion by the president. Each legislative floor session is not to exceed thirty two minutes in length. Speakers may comment on matters related to district business only. The board will not permit public sessions discussions involving individual district personnel by means of entitlement for students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and/or concerns to superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Right, we have Lisa Piran.
Hi, Lisa Piran, thank you for your time tonight. My topic tonight is about AIS. I first want to start off by saying that I support any extra that my children may need. However, I emphasize the word extra because it's not extra, it's instead of. What I mean by that is instead of my child receiving their core subjects, they go to AIS, which I've been told does not always align with the instruction in the classroom. So my child is still being assessed on science, math, but isn't in the class to receive those instructions. For example, my child is missing four hours worth of science instruction a month to go to AIS. But yet will still be assessed in the classroom even though they are missing the instruction. And also will be responsible for state science test in fifth grade. My other child is leaving his core math class to go to AIS, which also doesn't align with what's going on in the classroom. But he was also expected to take a state exam and he was automatically put at a disadvantage. I've received a couple of times this year on Parents Square about how important attendance is and I agree fully. My kids do show up and work incredibly hard, but they're being taken from their core subjects that they deserve to be part of. There's a program out there that many neighboring districts are adopting, it's called WIN. Stands for what I need. This program is effective because it supports the AIS students, but it makes sure that no instructional time is lost. I will also gladly offer my knowledge about the WIN program if needed. I request that you take a look and see how much instructional time is being lost from the students who do go to AIS, instructional time from the classroom. Please give these students the extra that they need, but give them the same opportunity of having their core subjects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The president's report, I don't have too much to update tonight. Policy committee continues to plug away to review policy, policy, policies. That's my update at the moment. And now moving on, finally to our student representatives report, Franchette S. Caro.
Hi everyone, thank you. So the new events this year have since started bouncing out already with GoShin schools having many events. In the role display of school unity and leadership, the varsity cheerleading team recently visited SAS where they assisted in the launch of the new program. This initiative aims to promote positive student behavior through its fourteen core pillars. Prepare for success, act respectfully, work together, and stay safe. The charity played a key role in engaging the students and fostering excitement for the program, which focuses on cultivating a supportive and respectful school environment. Additionally, the high school has held grade level meetings to ensure students are aligned with the academic expectations at upcoming events. These meetings are a part of the school's ongoing efforts to foster open communication and attain a structured environment conducive to learning and personal growth. Looking ahead, the high school's preparations are underway for the upcoming homecoming festivities such as pep rally, which will begin next week. The highlight of these celebrations will be homecoming football games scheduled for Friday, October eighteenth, where GoShin will compete against FDR High School. Overall, the past month has been great and I look forward to the continued progress in the months ahead.
Thank you. Alright, thank you very much Francesca. And now moving on to our very own Oxbow representative with your legislative belt, Mr. John Sullivan.
Okay, I'm a news reporter now, I should be on the scene.
We had some handouts, right?
Yeah, so.
We're gonna make it lively.
I appreciate that, so I did start passing around some handouts. At the Oxbow meeting this month, we had a great presentation from ADAC, the alcohol and drug awareness. They did a great job of kind of highlighting their services. I was saying before we came back on the air here that I was very pleased that GoShin got a shout out from ADAC as being one of the more proactive districts in regards to utilizing their programs. One part of the form of move on, we did talk about having this question with Dr. Coos. They did talk about offering a service where they create basically a bedroom and they hide all the different paraphernalia that's available. Is that something we currently do or?
So pre-COVID, it's called the hidden bedroom.
Yep.
And pre-COVID, we had done it numerous times, obviously through COVID that slowed down. I met with ADAC last Thursday. We talked about the possibility of bringing that forward again. Many times we do it this spring and we're getting closer to prom time and any events. It was something that the other districts in the room who did utilize it, it was very well received and the parents found it very helpful. It sounded like a kind of cool concept to the kind of unified what the before. So, a couple other quick notes, Red Ribbon Week starts the twenty first. There will be a presentation, they did not give me the time, but on the twenty third at the Arcane Government Center. And that's for, I think everybody does know, when you see those red ribbons tied on the trees out there, picturesque entrance to the village by the government center, that's for Red Ribbon Week. They also will, Chastor will be hosting the Red Ribbon kickoff this year. And I know for a fact that some GoShin students are attending. Last one is attending, so, which I appreciate. And lastly, not related to ADAC, on October ninth, open any board members, there was a tour of the Arcane House campus at OLSI's and they're going to show the new classrooms, so, seemingly exciting at nine AM. And then on eleven eighteen at two PM, giving a summary for Gibson Road. Obviously, for us as stewards of the community, OLSI's capital improvement projects obviously have an effect on some of the things we do and I think this is a great opportunity to see the fruits of our community's labor, so. That is everything I have, thank you very much.
Alright. Alright, do we have any other board members, committee reporters? Very good. Did everybody have a chance to review the policies that were sent around?
Yes.
Alright, so tonight, the first reading of policies that went around to the board members are the school district records, one point, school district records regulations, eleven twenty R, next official student members' report of education, two two four five, and disclosure of wrong code, nine six four. Alright, so we'll keep on moving down our list and now going to our superintendent's report, Dr. Chris Gottes.
Thank you, Mr. Gottes. So I will work hard to leave a message for Chris and refer him to what we have on for tonight. We want to put a briefing regarding the recent state superintendent's conference. So each year, we're afforded the opportunity to be able to attend with fellow superintendents from around the state. And it's not only an opportunity for additional training on what is current and what is relevant, but to also go through a large amount of information sharing. And I'm not going to debrief on every single session I was able to attend, but just some of the highlights. One of the superintendents spoke from the personal experience on school violence as a classroom teacher. He had been a victim of school shooting in Columbia High School and he screened books when he was still a teacher. And he spoke about the evolution of what he has seen in terms of prevention, trying to get ahead of these things and risk management and threat assessment, which is on the first and forefront of the minds of all of our administrators and clinicians when certain issues come up. One of the most interesting sessions that I was able to attend was on that of artificial intelligence. As we know from around the state, artificial intelligence is now here, it's present, it's part of instruction, it's part of what our teachers are looking at. And three superintendents did a collaborative session on ways that they are now implementing that in their districts, how they are empowering their staff to really grab onto it and look for meaningful ways to see how it can positively impact the classroom. The reality is from what they are saying from the work that they've done, when students leave the school, they're going to be faced with how AI is affecting them in the workplace, in higher education, in the military. It was very interesting to hear how they plan to do that. Two sessions that I was able to attend really focused on construction and state aid and school funding. As we all know, everyone is watching very carefully on what these potential changes in the state aid formula is going to look like in terms of foundation aid. Robert Magna, who we had an opportunity to meet with regi- regionally, who was the president of the Rockefeller Institute, came as well to speak. And if you watch the local news or the state news, he seems to be out everywhere and the governor's pushing him out front, but he is the one that is addressing most or all of the questions that are coming up. I will say he's been somewhat scripted and if someone asks him a question on a particular, on transportation aid, on social education aid, his answer seems to be, yes, we're looking at that. They've been very non-committal on what the changes are going to be. We know that he is committed to making sure that the governor has that report in hand for December first. What the governor and the legislature will reconcile to do with that afterwards, who knows? One very telling session that I was able to attend was on that of cyber threat actors. There was a presentation given by the Buffalo City Schools and then a Long Island School District. One of the first questions that they asked as presenters in the room were how many districts had been victim of any kind of a cyber attack, either ransomware or malware? Fifty percent of the districts in the room said yes. Another district, another Long Island district that was present in the room also shared that they had not been once but twice victim within the last two years. So it's out there, as hard as districts are working and investing to protect and secure their network, it is just a very difficult challenge. So they offered a lot of their, excuse me, a lot of their experiences and what they have gone through. Obviously, some of the experiences are worse, Buffalo, they're a large city school district. They are six years later and in some ways they're still recovering from some of the effects of the cyber attack. There's happened during COVID when all the students were at home or all the students were sitting on the other side of the computer waiting to log on and their network was shut down and they had no way to get the information out to the families. So again, it just shows that the investments that we're making, the work that we put forth in terms of trying to protect our network and the work that Mr. Sterak, Mr. Thompson do with the team, even though we were subject to it, we recovered fairly quickly. We have the right foundation blocks in place from what we had listened to. The recovery that we had was fairly quick compared to what some of the others were experiencing. So again, this is a very valuable session for us to go to. And the last thing that I want to point out from the superintendent's conference, it closes every year with the commissioner addressing the state school superintendents on high level issues and questions that have been posed by superintendents ahead of time. One thing that was an open ended question to the commissioner was, is there anything that you really want the field to hear? And I was surprised to hear that she went to mixed competition, which we have spoken about. And she clarified what the purpose of state aid was and why they were entertaining it. But there was one message that she wanted carried back to the local level and her intent is for any of those decisions to remain at the local level because there's been speculation that it will come up again in the next session with the state education department. But she was very clear, if it does, it is her intent to leave those decisions at the state level. So again, it was a very strong set of experiences and sessions that were planned for the superintendents and a lot of information to be able to carry back. Next item, I'm going to partner with Mrs. Lammerand. We had a good discussion last time, we have a brief presentation of budget development calendar for twenty five, twenty six. Shoot, twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six.
Twenty one, it is twenty one, twenty six.
Oh, right, right, yes, looking forward, sorry about that.
We're in three years of any.
Correct. So I'm just gonna ask Mrs. Lammerand just to give some highlights of the budget development calendar for the next year. And I believe this is an action item for if there are no other questions for the board for a few nights. Ms. Lammerand, I'll turn it over to you for me.
Okay, and I'll just be brief and discuss the major changes in the budget calendar as compared to the twenty four, twenty five budget development calendar. We have moved some things up, for example, in November on the eighteenth, we're going to begin the discussion of the board's goals for the budget as well as discuss the rollover budget. And a rollover budget is where you just roll over your current expenditures at any increases as you may see fit for energy or contractual obligations, et cetera. Then in January, we're going to begin our presentations rather than waiting until March. So we'll do the expenditure side of the budget in January and then in March, we will be presenting the revenue side of the budget. But just as a reminder, in March, we don't pass the budget. But just as a reminder, in March, we don't pass the budget usually till April first. I don't know this year. If they'll be on time, we never know. But, um, that is why we have the adoption of the budget on April twenty second, which is in line with where we typically would adopt the budget for the final budget for twenty nine, twenty six. So those are really the major changes. Did anybody have any questions regarding the, uh, budget calendar?
Well, this is, um, as an action item for your approval tonight. And as just an aside, we've already, in anticipation of this being approved, Mrs. Lamren has already shared with the principals and directors their initial request so that we can get moving on this. If I could ask Mr. Reddick for some help with the.
Slide deck.
That would be great. Just for the Erie Street first.
Uh, yeah, the slide deck.
So as we have been discussing, uh, the school district had been approached by the village of Goshen regarding the parcel land adjacent to the district office building on Erie Street that we still own for the possibility of transferring ownership to the village of Goshen. Village of Goshen is interested and has partnered with town of Goshen with the potential, if the transfer goes through, of developing that plot of land into a village park. While we have been discussing this, we've had two separate community meetings where the village has partnered with the district and the town as well. I'm just going to run through very quickly some of what we have talked about. So, thank you, Mr. Reddick. So again, the entire Erie Street Park at one time had been, uh, all school district property. That's one. This was essentially the only school building in town, if you will. And that was a lot of the recreational and the sports park. Sports property for what the district used for interscholastic sports. As the district continued to grow, as the district continued to evolve, built further back up on the hill. Obviously, our competitive sports moved with the school building and spent some time in reality since the district hasn't used that property at all. As we talked about, the town and the village have approached the district with the JRC about the transfer of the original piece, uh, of the next piece. Again, in the nineties, one piece went over. Mrs. Farrell and I had looked at the records to try to find out the why. We did see the transfer. We saw it go through. We don't know really why they carved it in half and left one piece with the village and one piece with the school district. But here we are, almost thirty, forty years later, with the village looking now for the rest of the property to be able to develop it. You can go to the next slide, please, Mr. Reddick. So in consideration of what a transfer of property would look like, essentially, there's two options. Number one, and I'm not going to read verbatim what's here, but if there is a public corporation transferred to transfer, obviously, we can use the village as an example. So the school district of the village, you as a board can opt to put it as a public referendum before the community to choose to transfer title. It has to go that way essentially because there's eight different municipalities, if you will, that actually own the property under the umbrella of the school district. And you would need everyone to have an option to say, yes, Board of Education, as owners, colonos, owners of the property, we approve you making that transfer. It makes sense. The village has the other part. They want to develop it. You're not using it. So that is one option that you can choose to put it before the community to say yes or no. The other option is if you chose to, uh, put it on the open market, is that's exactly it. Essentially, you're going to take a for sale sign with the realtor, put it out there and say this property is for sale. You are obligated in doing that to make sure that it goes to the highest bidder. Again, it doesn't guarantee who's going to get the property. It is owned as commercial property right now under the village ordinance. But you would have the potential if someone else buys it, that you'd have development right next to what is currently a village park. So legally, those are the two options by which you can transfer the property. Largely in our first meeting, that was what we discussed. Legal obligations of the school district. Actually, Mr. Riley and Mr. McArdle actually took those that attended that meeting out to the property. We actually showed them the pieces that we own, what falls on our property, just to give them a visual of what is included in the district parcel and what could potentially be transferred if the board decides to move forward. The next one, Mr. Reddick, that would be great. So in the second meeting, we looked specifically at those that, when we put a, a questionnaire out to the, to the school district community, we left one part of the questionnaire as an open-ended question, if you will. In that open-ended question, largely what we were saying was, I'd like to know what the village is going to do with the property if it gets transferred over. So Mayor Donald and Sal LaBruna, Sal LaBruna from the JRC spent a lot of time giving their history of understanding of the property. They talked about as far back as when the Main Street School was the only school in town, if you will, what the site plan looked like and how it got to this point. They then talked about how they might look to fund any of the changes moving forward. They talked about the limited budget of JRC the way it stands, but that they have a good mutual cooperation with the town right now. And the town would partner with them in any development. If the Board of Education chooses to put this before the community and is successfully approved, what they would do with it after that. If you go to the next page, please, Mr. Reddick. Again, they spoke about financing. If you could just go to that very last slide, Mr. Reddick, on the map of the development. So the current oversight of the proposal that they had includes some realignment of the field, uh, some construction of pickleball courts. They are looking to relocate the playground with some new playground equipment. They are looking to build a new pavilion and they were looking potentially to redo the basketball courts with some new paving. And to be able to improve a lot of the lighting on the property as well. Again, they took some feedback from those that were present. There were some, uh, community members present from the youth athletic leagues. Uh, there were some questions asked about the potential of moving some of the pieces that are in the current district, I'm sorry, in the current village plan. Overall, it was a very, very positive conversation. One community member wrote up the fact that while this is great, should the Board of Education choose not to put this before the community or sell the property, all the conversation was a moot point. So that kind of refocused the conversation back to what is the district's decision going to be? So that was really the end of the second meeting. We have one more meeting planned for next Wednesday. There will be no new presentations, uh, made. This is, we encourage all the attendees to bring questions back on things that could potentially be asked, things that they would want clarified, questions they would want answered. So that will be the final meeting. It is important again, just to, for the board to think about, should you choose to move forward with this? There are some timeliness pieces that you need to think of. There are legal notifications that have to go up to the newspaper. There is, uh, a state environmental quality review act that has to be approved by the board. And then there's timelines leading up to the votes. So depending on when you're thinking about wanting to do this, if you choose to move forward, I would encourage the board to be prepared at the next meeting to either discuss and or take action if you choose to move forward or not. A pause there? Anything I can answer on Erie Street? I know that's a lot.
Thank you. Um, at the next meeting, if you can provide us with some feedback from the, uh, community sessions. You know, um, what was the general perception? What were some of the concerns for our consideration? And I was just curious how many community members came out, uh, for the two meetings, for the walkthrough and had the follow-up presentation.
So, uh, I didn't count exactly, but Slammerin', twen- twenty to twenty five in each session?
I'd say.
Yes, about twenty to twenty five. And I can tell you largely just anecdotal feedback. Largely those that were in attendance were very supportive of the property being transferred over to the village. They would like to see it developed. They know the district isn't used yet and they would like to see some, some improvements made in the village. Seems, village and the town seem poised to be able to do that together.
If I could just make a suggestion on the next meeting. I know the last meeting was postponed, well, it was rescheduled, I should really say, to the day before due to a conflict, which was unintentional. But some of the members of the public weren't aware. Maybe we could just make, other than just a static website, something on parent square, something to make it so that we can have all the members show up and participate.
Okay, alright, okay, go on. Okay. So I'm going to partner again on the next piece with Mrs. Lamren. Um, as, as the audit committee heard from the auditor tonight, one of the things that we look at critically every year are our reserve funding levels. And one of the things that the auditor has pointed out to us is, um, our potential liabilities when it comes to our tax or sharing reserve. I shared with the board the level of outstanding liabilities that have been resolved already and those that are pending. We, we are pretty much funded to cover our liabilities, but we also have some that are pending liabilities that sit in litigation. I'm going to ask Mrs. Lamren to take over to just talk a little bit about where the reserves stand and then we can talk about some options after that. So I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, did you want me to discuss each reserve?
That would be great.
Okay, so this chart has all of our reserves on it and what the purpose of the reserve is and what we are able to do within, uh, the law with these reserves. So for the first one, that's the reserve for unemployment. And this is meant to help offset the costs for unemployment. We do pay, uh, when somebody is laid off or claims unemployment, we pay that amount in full because we do not pay in New York State in a manner as a percentage of salary in the way that you do if you were private business. So. So that is why we like to have a reserve set aside to offset these costs. Sometimes you'll have a bad year, such as the gap elimination years when the state aid was cut. And we had to make reductions throughout the state in the school districts. So this would help offset those costs. Um, we are funded, uh, pretty well in that reserve for the time being. The reserve for retirement contributions, this is for the ERS, which is the employees' retirement system, which is where you can put funds to help offset increases in the rates for employees' retirement system. And as a sub-fund of this, we have the TRS reserve. This came out, um, more recently in the last, I'd say, five years, maybe a little bit more. Or we could also fund monies for the teachers' retirement system in the same way that we do with the employees' retirement system. Insurance reserve, this is to help pay the liability or losses for any, um, judgments against the district. Or it can also help offset the costs of our insurance, increasing costs in the budget. Next, we have the tax surcery reserve, which is the one that the auditors were speaking of tonight. And she was saying that it should be funded based on a percentage of what our settlements have been historically. So I did look at that and we would be about forty percent, fifty percent is what we should be funding here. Whereas I've, uh, calculated the amount in full, if we were to settle at a hundred percent of what they are claiming as a reduction to be five point nine million dollars. So there is some extra funds in there. If you would like to call them extra or not, I don't know, because it could change. You know, the assessed values and the equalization rates are two years behind. So that could also have an impact of how they are settling with these currently. But what we were recommending is to move some of those funds possibly into the capital reserve in preparation for, uh, the capital project. Uh, the reserve for employee benefits, this also is, you've probably heard the term EBLR. This is used to offset the costs, costs, I'm sorry, for, um, liability for employees' sick, personal and vacation time. This is the GASP one oh one also that Jennifer had mentioned during the audit committee meeting that they're coming out with regulations on how it would count for this. So that I would feel comfortable just leaving it where it is right now until we hear more about that GASP, which is coming down the road for the end of this twenty four, twenty five school year. And then last but not least is the reserve for capital construction. And this was established by the voters in twenty twenty two? Twenty twenty one, twenty two? And it is to be funded for up to ten million dollars to be used for capital projects. And we currently have three hundred and, almost three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the reserve. But if we were to put some of the fund balance into it, we could start, uh, putting money in there around, I'm recommending two point one million dollars. And then if we were to move some of the tax surcery reserve into it, we would start building that up. We'd have close to five million dollars if we were to do that.
So, so just to, to clarify and reiterate what Mrs. Lamren just shared, there's two pieces to the conversation. We're not asking for any action tonight. We just wanted this to be on your radar because in the near future, we will need to take some action on some of this. You have the year end. So remember, for unappropriated fund balance, you can only carry up to four percent of your previous year's budget. Any access that we had from the previous year from twenty three, twenty four, and the vast majority of the, the additional fund balance we are carrying is both from interest income that we had from the previous year and then from the, uh, the FEMA money that we received right at the end of the last fiscal year. That's one decision are the recommendations here on the sheet where you would like to see the money directed. The second conversation was the one that we've brought up regarding the tax or share reserve. Mrs. Lamren and I have spoken extensively. We do have some concerns about new filings for taxers that could be coming down the road from some of our larger properties that are within the district. However, if the board wants to move a portion of that money, you'll, you'll see the recommendations that we have made there for the potential transfer into capital. Here's the one thing that I just want to remind the board though also is once money is placed in the capital reserve, you do need voter approval to remove the money from capital reserve and it does need them to go to capital construction. Can address any questions on that? Again, we, we just wanted this to be a first look tonight. It will be coming back in the future to, to codify some of these recommendations and to make some of these transfers that we will have to make. But wanted to give this information out and ask any questions that you might want.
I also wanted to point out that the capital reserve, the benefit of the capital reserve is that you can borrow less money, but you still get aid in on these funds. It's not that you don't get the aid, because sometimes there is a misconception of that. So you do still get building aid on your total project rather than just what you're borrowing for. So it's important to be able to offset this. And you also have the cash upfront to start paying for your project and you don't have the borrowing bands, do ban borrowing right away either. So that's always a very good thing for your boxes. And reserve are really intended for emergencies also in the fourth and fifth of August.
Can I just ask a general question about items that are hateable? So seems like nice chunk of funds that may be available and just thinking about some of that recommendation on how there might be able to be some capital improvements, some work in the buildings. Which projects would, within the buildings, generally speaking, not specific building per se, would be the most hateable? Where would we get the most paid for, for lack of a better term, types of projects?
Reconstruction in buildings. Outside work is typically not hateable. If this is something in the building, you can tie the projects together. Classroom space is always hateful. We do have to calculate the maximum cost allowance and what you can get in aid back. So there's a ceiling that you reach by building. But if your last project is coming off, folks, within five years, you can believe it is, and we're coming up on that with the high school, um, then your maximum cost allowance will go back up again. And I'm actually meeting tomorrow afternoon with the, uh, BPD. Our financial advisor is coming down and we can start discussing these items in preparation of discussing capital projects. What do you want to get done first? Um, what kind of plans do you want to put in place? How much money do you want to spend? It all ties in with this. And I can move forward.
And that's an opportunity as well to look at items on your building condition, your last building condition survey and start to address some of those concerns as well.
Yeah, thank you. I think that analysis would be really helpful to understand what that cap would be for spending within a building to get the maximum amount of return. So that we can actually split it and then get the maximum amount of return and understand what type of project that, that could be. That would be great.
Less impact on the taxpayers.
Yes, absolutely.
Any questions? And again.
I know it's a lot.
We, we, we will be coming back into the future. Obviously, if there's questions that come up, again, we are required, as I said, to only carry the four percent forward. We want to move some of this into reserves. If questions come up, let us know. But future meetings, we'll, we'll be coming back and ask for those transfers based on your recommendations.
I have a question. Have you, funny, besides moving into the capital, is there another area to look at?
Yes, so if you want to talk about the. Yes, so if you want to talk about the.
Sure, um, we do have wiggle room, and I did put under the plan and rationale is where we can, I did put numbers in there to if they've put it up to, and there is wiggle room in our, our reserve for retirement contributions. That is a good place to put them because we are seeing increases in the rates based on the economy, the way it's been the last few years. We benefit reserve again until we know what the GASP one oh one is going to bring and how they're going to require us to fund the EBLR. I don't want to put too much money in there, or if we did, it would be a temporary situation based upon that information that'll come out next summer. It's really just, I would say, the reserve spring retirement in an offset. Costs, and it's a good time for that, too, because we don't know what we're going to be dealing with in this year's budget as far as revenue goes and state aid. So it is helpful to be able to offset these costs in the budget if we have to.
Keep moving then. So if you have been watching the local news at all or seeing it on the internet, there is a, a large conversation unfolding with the governor, been very vocal about in relation to smartphones in schools. And in July two thousand twenty four, Governor Hoag started what she called a statewide tour with educators to talk about what educators see as the impact of smartphones in schools. To my knowledge, she has not been in our region. I know she's been in the capital district, down in the Buffalo area, but has not had any regional meetings here in the lower, in Hudson Valley. I bring this up because in the beginning of the school year in two thousand twenty three, when the board updated the code of conduct, when we started to talk about electronics policy and we talked about acceptable use, when the conversation of smartphones came up and cell phones came up, we predicated the code of conduct heavily based on responsible use. We know that some of our neighboring districts just in the north, for example, have gone to yonder patches with locking phones up during the day. And, and again, we could sit, make arguments on both sides, but our code of conduct, the way it currently sits, really predicates responsible use on behalf of our students. I bring this to your attention, obviously, because, not only because the governor has been very vocal about it. She has promised uh this spring to introduce legislation with a potential ban on smartphones in schools. Whether or not she gets support from that is, is yet to be seen, but she has been very vocal about that. The other side of that is, uh, this week in the um school board's uh periodical that comes out, the commissioner has taken a very different stance. She's been very vocal where she talks about Governor Hoag considering a statewide ban, and the state education commissioner has come out and made a very clear statement that she believes that a statewide ban would be a mistake. So I brought this up just a few times to the board. It looks like this is going to unfold in a very interesting fashion between the governor, the legislature, and the state education department. Should the board want to revisit the code of conduct, it may be a time where we want to draw uh some teachers or administrators and some of our students together just to engage in a conversation to see what their feelings are before any of this action happens. Uh, but it seems to be that this is becoming more and more at the forefront of conversation between uh the governor and the state education commissioner. Okay, go on. So I'm gonna partner with Mr. Carter on the last item, Mr. Reddick, if you can help us. There we go. So this past June, the state education department met, and, and a lot of this will be reviewed on some things that Mr. Carter has already spoken about with the board. But the state education department came forward to talk about the blue ribbon commission and pending changes to graduation measures here in New York State. There's a, a couple of new updates that I think are important for us to go to. Essentially, in this presentation that we're gonna review with you tonight, if you want to go, oh, that's one more, actually. So there are four different transformations that are going to be released according to what the state education department has been talking about. Four different transformations that will be coming in terms of what graduation outcomes, graduation measures are going to look like. While we couldn't take action on this yet, because we don't know what the regulations behind these proposals are going to be, it's important that we have these conversations. I know the high school has been engaging internally a lot in these conversations. Carter and I have been talking about it, and we have begun as a district cabinet also to talk about what are the K twelve implications going to be when these changes start to come. The first one is what they call this concept of the New York State Portrait of the Graduate. And if you remember, when we did our strategic planning at a very localized level, we already have done a lot of this work. Many of our staff are very much in tune with what this means, and if you could open the next slide, Mr. Reddick. One more, please. There we go. Um, what the state is proposing from the state level in terms of the criteria of what they would like to see in terms of a graduate of New York State fit very neatly into many of the criteria that our district level staff have already had conversation with and developed. They start with this because when you look at some of the changing requirements, they're going to back many of the changing requirements into these criteria of a portrait of a graduate. So when you talk about testing requirements, when you talk about external experience, community-based experience, where will it fit into these pieces of the puzzle? They want to make sure that all these criteria will neatly come into what they have developed. Forward one, Mr. Reddick. Two, two farts, sorry, sorry. There we go. So the next transformation, the next pillar, if you will, is re, really redefining credits. Again, we're waiting for the regulation to see what the regulation says, but essentially, I, what I believe that they're getting to here is not necessarily changing the number of credits, but rather how you can be awarded credits. Right now, when we talk about gaining credits, it's you take a conventional course. You go to BOSI's and take a course, you take a regent's exam, and now you have your credit and you move on. In doing so, what they're looking at now is what other experiential learning would matter. So if you're heavily involved in the arts, if you're heavily involved in dance, something in athletics, can any of that apply into this whole concept of a portrait of a graduate where you can receive credit for graduation? One of the things I want to be clear on before I start to turn this over to Mr. Carter is a lot of what we're hearing is about the regions going away, the regions going away, the regions going away. Regions are not going away. The regions will stay as a defined pathway for a student. If they choose that that is the best pathway for them to reach graduation, to still pursue that. However, there's going to be different options there on how they might get there besides the regions. Regions are still, if you talk about the bureaucracy, regions are still required uh for us to file with the federal government on how we're meeting compliance for checkpoints, how we're assessing students. So there will be some requirement there still that the, the state will have to file with the federal government. But again, not all students will have to pursue that going just through a standard course of study at the regent's exams. I'm, Mr. Carter, or sorry, Mr. Reddick. Again, the, the next piece just really talks about what they may look like. You know, we talked about word, word-based experience, capital learning experiences with some of the college and the high school uh courses that we have. Early college, high school, the number of college courses that we offer in our high school is quite large. The current diploma types that we use for seals will now just become a sticker, if you will, just on the diploma. It will become a diploma type, our traditional high school coursework, our cooperation with our BOSIs. Again, we talked about participating in the arts and then passing approved assessments. When we talk about passing approved assessments, we don't also want to discount some of the others that we've already offered. Advanced placement exams, college and the high school exams that could be approved by the state as a monitor still who worked towards graduation. So in essence, thank you, excuse me, the takeaway is really going to be different pathways to get to the same place, different pathways to get to the same diploma. Want to go right to the next slide. But that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carter to talk about the second two pillars that they're talking about in their shift for the new graduation requirements.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. So before I begin, uh, just summarizing what we've spoken of um in previous meetings, I think it's important to realize that a lot of what we talk about as far as illustrating proficiency and having opportunity, especially at Goshen High School, um, a lot of it is in place currently. And of course, we've got um an opportunity to expand on that. We'll await the guidance that's provided on November tenth or around November tenth at some point in November, and that will really serve as our number one gap. Um, a lot of the items that you've seen on previous slides, such as the financial literacy component, of course, we have with our current business plan. Um, also with our CTE program, computer science, we also have many dual credit courses that also fit to build. So again, I feel like we have a good foundation and an opportunity to build when we receive more guidance. Dr. Coats hit a lot of the things that we'll speak about here. So when you talk about uh sunsetting our diploma assessment requirements, this is not taking away uh any of the assessments that we're used to. Students will still have an opportunity to sit for reviews exams, as many as they choose to sit for. But also, we don't want to mislead anyone, and although it doesn't have anything to do with graduation, free A testing is not going away either. So everything that we currently comply with under ESA will stay in place as far as we know. That's part of the plan. So when you talk about assessment requirements uh for diploma, moving into that portrait of a learner and talking about what we can do to show competency, it goes back to some of those performance-based assessments that might come through dance or the arts. It may be capstone projects such as those we see right now through a seal of citizen readiness. Also, we have a chance to uh move into uh work-based internships where our students go out, which we currently have students take departmental internships. Uh, so they may be assessed in that manner. I believe the goal here with removing the assessment requirements is really to provide more flexibility, of course, for the, for the LEA, but more importantly, student choice. So no longer is it the absolute requirement that you must pass these regions for this designation of diploma, but rather you now have choice to illustrate competency, which is really important for us. So again, regions and uh pathway assessments can still play a part in, in illustrating competency, just not required. So is, if you move on to transformation number four. So moving to one diploma, this is something that we had also spoken of um back in the summer months. And so right now, of course, having local diploma, regions diploma, uh, reason, regions with advanced designation. It appears that NICE is looking to move toward, toward one diploma. Uh, and so therefore, those three designations will no longer be available again. So we assume, um, at this point now, if you just take, for example, in advanced regions, that would be um most likely a seal on the diploma. So this option to add diploma and endorsements and seals on the diploma rather, again, that's flexibility that districts will have because although the state, of course, um, will give us the standards that we must follow, as the local will have the opportunity to put in programs that comply with standard and give students those opportunities and that flexibility. And so moving to one diploma appears to be the fourth transformation. And again, um, Dr. Coats and I looked a few times. Uh, we didn't find anything other than, you know, potential release of more information and more guidance documents on November. Um, but I know that right now we're moving into a very important public forum, um, components of Dr. Coats, if you'd like to speak to that.
Mr. Reddick, if you don't mind, go to the other hyperline there. So part of what the state education department has asked of the blue ribbon commission is to make sure that these conversations get out to the field. And with this quickly moving towards mid-November, there have been uh regional meetings for both educators and for family members to be able to, to weigh in and to be able to engage in these conversations. The forum that's up on the screen is one that we received actually today from our regional BOSIs. This is for a parent forum at Orange Jolster BOSI's to weigh in on the graduation metrics. We are going to make this uh very public on our district website. We'll send it out on Parents' Square. On this evening, Nat BOSI is actually going to be hosting this. It'll be twofold. There'll be one session for the educators in the community, and there'll be another session for parents and community members that want to come in and give feedback, which will all be shared with the state education department. But again, this is just uh an entire piece of the process that they're trying to put forth, if you will, to make sure that as many people that want to engage, give feedback are eligible and able to do so. And again, we'll make sure that we get this out on our district website and send it out on Parents' Square so that those that want to sign up may do so. Thank you very much for giving me that time tonight, and I will.
Make sure that's all you have. Anything else? A lot of information. Thank you, Dr. Coats. All right, moving on to our next quarter of business, our assistant superintendent for business report, Mrs. Lamran.
Thank you, and thank you again. Uh, tax collection is now into its second month, and that's the period when we collect two percent of penalties from the annual taxes. And I'll have a report with the revenue reports for you at the next meeting when we review September financial statements. Our state reports have been completed and filed. The internal audit RFP, the responses came in today. We had two uh firms that responded, Cooper Aries and RBT. I just have a few questions to ask them before I report back to you and present which firms. And our financial reports for tonight are for the month of August. August is another quiet month, and uh as far as revenues and expenditures go, we did receive excess cost data of four hundred and eighty one thousand dollars, but this is for twenty three, twenty four school year. It's actually in account receivable, and so that's why you won't see it on the revenue reports. Highlight payments that came in were for the solar. We have South Ocean Solar, forty one thousand, one seventy five, and Glen Mirstow, one twenty three thousand, eleven and twenty, twenty eight dollars, sorry. And then our interest earnings for the month were eighty two thousand, five hundred and seventy three dollars. Our expenditures for August were two point eight million dollars. Our total expenses through the end of August were five point eight million dollars, and we earned two hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars in the fourth. For the final. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you. The reserve, please, beyond those.
All right, thank you very much. And then moving on to our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction personnel and technology report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. I have nothing further to report on this evening after the initial discussion of the rules. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and then moving on, I need to approve the consent agenda. Shannon Billy. He resolved upon recommendation of superintendent schools, Board of Education, exceptional parent. My pleasure, social studies teacher, January thirty first, twenty twenty five. Mr. Isaac's been with the district for thirty one years. He had further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Board of Education approves the remainder of the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Staying, aye, aye. All right. Congratulations, Mr. Isaac, and good luck with everything moving forward. Thirty one years. It's great. No hold of business, so moving on, I need a motion to approve next. Ashley John. He resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education approves minutes of the September sixteen, twenty twenty four regular meeting. Those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to accept the recommendations of the Committee of Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education. Reddick, Scott. He resolved that the Board of Education hereby arranges for the special education programs and services based upon the recommendations made for preschool and school age students with disabilities by the Committee on Preschool Special Education, CPSA, and Committee on Special Education, CSA, during the period September twelve, twenty twenty four, including September thirty, twenty twenty four. Directs the district to arrange for the provisions of said special education programs and services to such preschool and school age students with disabilities as recommended during such time period, CPSA and CSA. All those in favor? Opposed? Need a motion to approve the lead evaluators for teacher certifications. Shannon, Brett. He resolved that pursuant to the requirements of Education Law Section three zero one two, three zero, there's two point nine, the region rules, all people have needed all would require training to have complete. The region's rules, all people have completed all required training as lead evaluators, freshman, official, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Nicholas Pantaleone, ready resolution. Janelle Indell, Jordan Lawrence, Heather Carmen, Matt Landworth, Chris Cole, Erica Cruz, Heather Hendershaw, Selena Balenci, Jason Murray. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to adopt twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget development account. John, Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education approves the adoption of twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget development account. All those in favor? Post. Need a motion to accept the Newton-Hausser Financial Audit Report and approve corrective actions. John, Reddick. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education accepts the financial audit report for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, as presented by Newton-Hausser P C on October seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Be further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education hereby approves the corrective action plan for the external audit performed by Newton-Hausser for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. All those in favor? Post. Need a motion to accept the independent internal audit report prepared by Cooper Aries L O P. Shannon, Billy. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education accepts the internal, independent internal audit report, agreed upon procedures, school lunch receipts, twenty-twenty-four, report prepared, prepared by Cooper Aries L O P. The audit year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to approve the Goshen C S D students to participate in trap shooting team at Minnesick Valley, C S D. Ashley and John. Whereas Minnesick Valley Central School District, Minnesick Valley, established the Minnesick Valley High School Trap Shooting Team, under the rules of the New York State High School Clay Target League, affected for the twenty-twenty-two spring sports season, and has continued to team. And whereas Minnesick Valley has agreed to permit eligible students from other Orange County school districts to register as a team, as a member of the team. And whereas Goshen Central School District has one or more students who are interested in joining the team, be resolved that the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District approves the participation of Goshen students in Minnesick Valley High School trap shooting team during twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Goshen assuming the cost of Goshen students' participation on the team on a pro-rata basis, based upon the number of students from each school district participating on the team, as well as liability insurance, student activities insurance, purpose for such students as members of the team, with the agreement that Minnesick Valley will not be responsible for transportation of the participating students. And be further resolved that a certified copy of the resolution be transmitted to the Board of Education Superintendent of Schools, the Minnesick Valley Central School District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Stay, abstain? Thank you. Need a motion to approve the agreements for special education services. Shannon, John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education enters into two agreements with the Cornwall Central School District, an agreement with the Westchester School for Special Children, an agreement with J C C A, an agreement with the Center for Discovery, and an agreement with Hilities First to provide extended school year special education services to Goshen Central School District during the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, working through the rates set by the New York State Department of Education. Be further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the board precedent to execute the agreements. All those in favor? Need a motion to approve overnight trips. Shannon, Scott. These will be for two overnight trips. For the G H S advanced music competition, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves an overnight trip to Hershey, Pennsylvania, for high school student, advanced music students to participate in a performance-based music competition from May thirtieth through thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Be further resolved that the board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or activity in the event of any emergency condition outside of the control of the school district in its sole discretion. All those in favor? Post. Second trip, the G H S Science Olympia Competition. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves an overnight trip to Cornell University, Ithaca, New York, Science Olympia team to participate in an invitational competition from November fifteenth through sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Be further resolved, the board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or activity in the event of an emergency condition outside of the control of the school district in its sole discretion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to accept donation authorization to increase the budget. Reddick, Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts with appreciation and donation from SEPSA in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to support sensory space in Goshen Intervene School. Be further resolved, the Board of Education approves the increase to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget as presented to support the associated insurance shares. All those in favor? Post. Need a motion to approve budgetary transfers. We have done it. Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the schools, Board of Education approves the budgetary transfers as presented in aggregate over one-five thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to appoint Title Nine Decision Maker and Appeals decision maker. Shannon. Be resolved, the Board of Education appoints the Assistant Superintendent of Business as Decision Maker in Title Nine Complaint, filed by employee number one-zero-zero-seven-two-four. Be further resolved, Board of Education appoints District Superintendent Orangeos to Bosse's as the appeals decision maker in Title Nine Complaint filed by employee number one-zero-zero-seven-two-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Need a motion to approve terms and conditions of the end of agreements. Reddick and John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education approves the terms and conditions and end of agreements for the following. Terms and conditions of the directors, central office staff, the executive secretary, superintendent, superintendent, district, or records retention officer, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction Personnel Technology, and Assistant Superintendent for Business. For the terms as presented. Here. Post. All right. Moving on to our next slide, I don't believe there's any additional bits for.
Yeah.
All right, good. All right, any board member issues that anybody would like to discuss?
Um. Hi, everyone. You know, I'm happy to see that we are opening up opportunities by joining with other districts. Um, you know, regarding the trap shooting over the summer, um, I did ask that we reach out to Monroe Woodbury, and I was just wondering if you had the next meeting, perhaps some follow-up, to see how that conversation went.
Mr. Saint Lawrence is here tonight. If if you wanted him to just give an update on this conversation, Monroe Woodbury about that, we'll be void to the next meeting, whatever you prefer.
I'm open to that.
Yes.
He doesn't mind giving us a couple of bullet points.
That'd be great.
Night.
Few.
John.
Especially if you're consistent working. Being here, everybody. Good to be with you tonight. Um, question about Monroe Woodbury and hockey is a conversation took place with Chris Vero, who was the acting interim athletic director of Monroe Woodbury president. He's also a tennis coach, and we had a match with Monroe Woodbury earlier this season, and I spoke to him. I reached out to Monroe Woodbury under the previous athletic director, but had not gotten a response, and uh, did have a couple other issues aside from hockey you told Monroe Woodbury about. I spoke to Chris Vero at the at the tennis match, and subsequently had another conversation with him. The conversation was on a number of different topics, but ice hockey did come up. Currently, I'll give you a status on what's happening with Monroe Woodbury Hockey as relates to Goshen. Monroe Woodbury has fifteen returning starters, or returning eleven, I should say, from the past year. They hired a new assistant coach. I don't know his name, but I do know he's in in the district and are pleased with him. Uh, coach, I believe is called Coffin. Is Andrew Coffin is still the coach there now. He was the coach initially coming in when we talked about this previously, and this is, I think, his third year in that position. Uh, in my conversation with Chris, I said, boy, there's still be an opportunity for a merger situation involving the teams. We would not be eligible for a shadowing program. And he said, if it would be a possibility, it would be something that would have to be discussed extensively with the new athletic director who they've hired, but is not coming in for a few more weeks. He said that most likely it would continue to be a cost-splitting situation, meaning that the Goshen School District, if there were to be a request for a merger, would have the expectation of paying for fifty percent of the ice time, fifty percent of the official fees, and half of the coaching stipends. We would be required to have transportation provided as school district for all of the practices and and gains for our students that would be participating. He did not seem to think that the emphasis and the excitement for that to happen is coming from the Monroe Woodbury president, players, families. And as far as the school district goes, he didn't want to say no, but he did share with me that they feel that their hockey program is where it needs to be independent of any other school. With that being said, I've also looked into a little bit about where hockey is in New York State. It has been divided into two groups now. There's two divisions. There's a a large division, which is over a thousand student high school, which Monroe Woodbury is. That's the level they compete at, and then there's nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine or less. That's Division Two hockey in New York State. Currently, there are fifty-three schools that are playing Division Two hockey in New York State, and that's where we would fall if we were to do something in hockey as a independent from Monroe Woodbury. So we would either ask to join them, or we would make a decision to be independent if we want to go without one.
I'm just curious, how do the other school districts do it where, um, is it a true splitting, or is it more of a consortium model? Um, you know, like old Westchester schools that do it, and, you know, I know Clarkstown has a female team. How's that sound?
Male Patterson Independent Team. Most of the schools have independent programs. Uh, the biggest thing that all the schools face is ice time, especially in our region. Majority of hockey-playing schools in New York State are, you know, north of the New York City thruway, in the in the Snowwell region, where they have a lot of facilities and maybe a little bit more outdoor environment to be able to do hockey. Uh, something remains a strong program. Ice time, the facility in Newburgh is difficult to handle on. Sportarama is much more, how can I say, consistent and a strong viable ice time or ice hockey venue for players to get ice time. I think that the combining of the teams throughout New York State for ice hockey is very limited. I could check on that and find out the exact number of schools that are actually combining to do it. I believe Clarkstown has combined, and they are kind of the same district, but the north and south used to have two separate hockey teams. They have two high schools in that district, so they're now just known as Clarkstown when they compete in in hockey. I know there's a couple of schools in in, I think Fox Lane maybe, that have baseball programs in Section One. Most of the hockey that's being played is is in the upstate region, if that if that helps.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very much. Any other board member? Thomas, in terms of thoughts?
Uh, so I think since our last meeting, we had the parent orientation of the house in the schools. And I was able to, very fortunate to visit the CJ Hooker's football Goshen High School, child's classes. And a few things that I saw or kind of spoken to. One is that, um, my years of youth late, because when I was in science class, I sat down upon the stools and the the wheels broke off. So I just kind of bring that out to add attention to say. You know, maybe we can go through the classrooms and look around at some of the maybe the age equipment, see if we can maybe either refurbish, repair, or replace some of these things. And my second comment was that, you know, of our faculty that I met, and all of them, they're very talented, energetic educators, and I want to say thank you, and it was very nice to be able to meet everyone. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Moving on, I need a motion for a re-executive session. Be resolved, Board of Education, when turning to the executive session, with the intent not to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right, everybody, have a good night.